Good evening, everyone. Calling this meeting to order. All right. Apologize for the delay. Councilmember from Ward 1?
Present.
Thank you. Councilmember from Ward 2?
Present.
Thank you. Councilmember from Ward 3?
Present.
All right. Councilmember from Ward 4?
Present.
Fantastic. Is Councilmember from Ward 5 present?
He's not online yet.
Okay. We can look out for him. For Councilmember from Ward 6, I need someone to excuse her.
Motion to excuse Councilmember Frye.
All right. There's a motion on the floor.
I will second it.
Seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. The ayes have it. We have quorum. Let's say the Pledge of Allegiance before we get started.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you. I'm going to actually turn it over to our guests from home team 5. We're talking about Hospital Hill.
That is right. All right. Can everyone hear me okay? Thumbs up. No? Okay. What about now? Let me closer. All right. Let me get comfortable then. Okay. Let me go ahead and share a presentation that we put together. And the purpose of this meeting, as we referenced in our last correspondence with the town, I think it was in February that we came, we are getting prepared to submit our preliminary plan of subdivision to Park and Planning. And once that preliminary plan of subdivision gets accepted by Park and Planning, they will make a referral out to the town of Chevrolet. And that referral gives you all 30 days, I believe it is, to respond and provide comment. And I know that's a pretty short timeline for a project of this scale. So we wanted to walk through the documents, the major documents that are included with that submittal so that you all got an advance notice, could prepare, could think about questions. There is a lot of information here. There's a lot of sort of technical information. A lot of these documents are, you know, related to conceptual engineering. So the purpose of this meeting in particular, I think, you know, it's probably best served to hit the highlights for each of the different documents. And then we can go into more detail, you know, either through questions or through follow-up sessions, you know, correspondence, you know, however it works best. But there's a lot of information. I know we have a big Maryland game coming up tonight. Don't want to keep everyone here all night, which I think, you know, we could do with all of this. But with that said, let me get going. So highlights of the preliminary plan of subdivision. And to give a little more context on exactly, you know, what that is, it's the first step in the entitlement process for any new development in Prince George's County. And it includes a number of things. The primary, you know, the primary submittal is the preliminary plan itself, which essentially sets your maximum density on site, allows the county reviewers at Park and Planning and, you know, folks at Chevrolet to review against the zoning code, to make sure it's following, the plan is meeting the zoning code. And then there's a series of, you know, adequate public facilities tests that are done. So we are seeking to enshrine, you know, the maximum feasible amount of density that we can see on site. That doesn't mean we're going to build every last residential unit. But it is important to get that high level of density improved now so that we don't have to go back in later and get, you know, increase. Because what they'll do with that density is look at traffic counts. They'll look at generated traffic. They'll look at water pressures. They'll look at stormwater flows downstream. You know, it's really what they, you know, it's how they enshrine, again, that maximum level of density. From there, as we make each of the submittals, entitlements submittals from this point forward for each of the vertical components, so each of the specific development lots, because as we've shared before and we'll get into here, you know, there's a number of development lots around the site. We're not going to build it all at once. We're going to do it in phases. So each phase that we get to, we'll submit a more detailed plan through a detailed site plan process through Park and Planning. That's where you'll see architectural renderings. That's where you'll see more specific programming. And, you know, the zoning office will check at each of those stages to make sure that we're staying within the bounds of that preliminary density that we got enshrined. So that process will be, you know, there'll be 10, 12 of those specific processes moving forward over the coming years. This is just the very initial first step for then, again, to do that adequate public facilities test for the entire site and enshrine that zoning density. So with that, I'll go into a little more detail on the specific site and the specific proposal. The existing zoning on site is CGO. That's Commercial General Office. It's intended for mixed-use zones, really urban. It's more of an urban core zoning. And we are not proposing, we're staying within the boundaries of that zoning. We're not proposing any sort of rezoning, anything like that. We're staying within CGO. We're pursuing 1,350 residential units, 70,000 square feet of commercial office, 40,000 square feet of commercial retail, and one hotel, one limited service hotel. And related, the only waiver that we're seeking through the preliminary plan process with Park and Planning is a 300-foot lot depth setback off of 295. So next to highways, essentially, anytime you abut a highway, the minimum lot depth from that highway right-of-way has to be 300 feet. We are proposing a number of parcels that wouldn't satisfy that requirement, though we think we have a pretty strong justification as to why. And that's really the width of BW Parkway and the width of that vegetated green area that there is adjacent to it. And I have an exhibit that we'll get into a little more detail to show that. I know we have, you know, some new faces in the crowd. So I wanted to just give one, you know, one quick overview again as a reminder of to set everyone's bearings through this illustrative site plan as to what we are proposing. Because from here on out, we're getting into more engineering documents, which are lines on a page. And if you're not used to looking at them, your eyes will go blurry, I'm sure. But again, so to just orient everyone quickly, this is the hospital site as it stands today. The bed tower, which is where the helipad is, again, just to give a little bit of orientation, is this building here that my cursor's on. I'm not sure if it's showing. It is. Great. And then the existing garage is here. Those are the only two components that, excuse me, and the county health department, which is the 70,000 square feet of office that I referred to earlier. Those are the only three components of the existing buildings on site that we intend to keep. As I'm sure you all know, we have completed the vertical demolition of every other component of the existing hospital or the former hospital. So we're down to slabs and foundations for each of those different elements. The primary vehicular accesses will remain to the north at the interchange up towards 202 and to the south on Pepsi Place. And as we have gone through previously, we are proposing, though this will get flushed out through the preliminary plan and beyond, secondary vehicular accesses at Lockwood and Inwood. The town center, the Village Green, the community square for the development is fronting the bed tower. So what we're imagining here is about 3/4 of an acre, public park, open to everyone, programmed with events, with retail fronting it on three sides. This is a retail, a little retail all-day cafe outlet that we are looking at and talking to potential retailers to take that space. And then ground floor retail within the bed tower and ground floor retail within this new multifamily building. We are proposing about 165 townhomes on site. And these are a minimum of 20 feet wide townhomes. So the dimensions are about 20 by 42 in strains of five or six, depending on the location. And we're proposing those, you can see those orange boxes here around the, really around the perimeters of the site. So the thought that we initially, you know, put forward back when we submitted the RFP, response to the RFP that the county put out, was a step up in density away from the single-family homes of the town of Chevrolet that exist today with those townhomes, which are a maximum of 3 1/2 stories, as we work towards that, the existing hospital bed tower and the Village Green, where we have higher density, still moderate density, four- or five-story apartment buildings really centralized in the area of the existing footprint of the hospital complex that was just demolished. In terms of roadway infrastructure, we will be maintaining and widening the existing hospital drive that snakes around the site. So the connection up to the north and then the, you know, the existing pass-through drive that goes around the site under the garage. And I'll get to that in a little bit of time, just what those right-of-way sections look like. Again, I'll do it high level here because I think there's going to be further conversations and we don't have that much time. The areas that we are building new roads or proposing to build new roads is a highly urbanized wide street section with large pedestrian facilities, slow 11-foot travel lanes, street trees, off-street bike lanes. Is this section of road that, whereas today you take a right and you continue on Hospital Drive under the existing garage. If you continued south, we're going to be building a new road that orients slightly further west from the existing drive. And that's going to be sort of the main drive, the main av through the site to the retail and the community square and all the benefits that that area has. And again, you know, that right-of-way section is highly focused on pedestrian, safe pedestrian and bike movements and decentivize any sort of fast traffic. There's street parking, there's street trees, really focusing on that new urbanist standards of what, you know, what constitutes a multimodal street and safe movements. My wife is out of town, so I stole her Stanley cup to keep me well hydrated. Okay. The only other components that I think are worth highlighting here is in addition to the existing, renovating the existing garage that's there today, proposing, we are proposing a standing pre-cast garage to serve the later phases of multifamily residential. And this, again, will serve the two later components of the multifamily. And the hotel that we are proposing, again, taking advantage of that sort of more urban, but really town square core is right here, fronting the turnaround and the community square. And with that, I will move to the documents of the preliminary plan of subdivision itself. And again, you know, this is as much of just an introductory of what these documents look like, what you're looking at when you're, what to look at and look for when you're getting into them and what their purpose is. So the preliminary plan, essentially, like I mentioned, it sets a density and it sets the amount of lots that you can subdivide, which is, you know, that's more of a technical thing. But what you'll see when we get to the plan itself is a number of parcels that we are showing here. And that doesn't mean each of these parcels is going to be its own component. You know, there's a reason we parcelize them up as we have today. But this is just for the initial approval. It doesn't, you know, we're not recording these subdivision lines at all right now. It really is to set just the maximum number of parcels. And those can push and pull and move as we go through not only the life of this preliminary plan of subdivision process, but the overall life of the project. The other component that is going to be important on the preliminary plan, especially given that we are seeking a waiver, is this 300-foot lot depth, which, again, you can see drawn here and is made clearer on exhibit that we have at the end of this presentation. So that is this blue line here. So to, you know, following the strict conformance of the code, given that we are adjacent to 295, we would need every single one of the lots on site to have a minimum depth of greater than 300 feet. So it can start right on the property line, but it has to, the lot itself has to extend 300 feet into the property. Anything that's highlighted that's tan color here are lots that we are proposing the waiver on because they do not satisfy that requirement. And our justification for which is both the topography of the area, then, you know, the existing conditions, given that this is a heavily wooded slope all the way down, and also just the width of 295 as is. From the back of curb, the lot and the right-of-way is actually already greater than 300 feet from 295. So each of these parcels is already very well set back from the existing roads. We are having a noise study completed so that quality of life for all of these towns, we can design it accordingly with the right window specs and wall specs, et cetera, so there's no sound penetration from 295. But again, that's the only area that we are seeking a variance waiver from the existing zoning code. And I'm sure that will be, you know, something that the Park and Planning asked specifically about. Again, nothing having to do with the town of Chevrolet side, no setback infringements there or anything like that. It's all just off of 295. Do you want me to keep going through each of these different documents? Or do you want to stop and talk about it? Talk about the preliminary plan?
We're at 7:00 and we only have half an hour.
Yeah.
So I would try to. We are at 7 o'clock and we only have half an hour left. So we want to make sure we can try to get something from the audience as well. So if you can truncate it a little bit.
Yeah. Okay. Good note. My throat's getting dry too, so. All right. So moving on to the conceptual stormwater design. This is a very important, very important stage of the preliminary plan because it lays out how we propose to meet stormwater standards of, you know, from the permitting agencies. And essentially, you know, given that the site has been predeveloped, is predeveloped, what we look at is existing drainage basins. So, you know, imagine a fall line across the site with water going north, water going south, water going east, water going west. So identify those different drainage basins and make sure that we are controlling the stormwater, not just to the existing standard, but the pre-development flow. So to meadow-level flows with each of those existing basins. So what we set out to do is, A, try to keep the drainage basins largely the same. So if there's a lot of water going north now, we want to keep about that same amount of water, at least the same amount of area draining to the north. And then, you know, you measure the flows of the existing conditions. Again, going back to meadow conditions. And then you measure the proposed conditions. And that is looking at impervious area of the entire development. And with acknowledgement of timing, there's a lot going on here, but let me at least just set the stage of what stormwater management facilities we are proposing. The low points of the site are generally where you want to keep that stormwater. So you retain it at its lowest point and then you release it at a controlled flow to the existing off-site conditions. We are proposing a underground storage, underground storage tank here to the north. Again, this is the existing garage. So this will take the flows from essentially the existing hospital, the north side of that existing bed tower. Everything from there north, it's going to drain to this storage basin. It's, again, it's going to retain the water and then it's going to release it at a controlled flow to the BW Parkway and the existing culvert that is at BW Parkway. For the area that's currently draining to the south, there is a stream and off-site runoff down to the south of the site. As it works down, you can see the contour lines, you know, generally following the drainage patterns here. We are controlling it at a underground storage basin in a parking lot just above that hill. And again, releasing it not to the flows of today, but releasing it to pre-developed condition flow down to the south. So that's stormwater quantity. And that is, again, you know, the mitigation of large storm events, making sure there's 100-year storm event. You're controlling that 100-year storm event and releasing it at a safe flow. There's also stormwater quality, which makes sure that provides for taking at-point sources. So as storm comes down and it hits pavement and it hits rooftops, it hits whatever and picks up sediment and picks up trash and everything else, providing for different areas for that water to then go and filter out and then be released downstream. And we're handling stormwater quality in a couple of different manners. We have a number of point source little stormwater basins that are essentially rain gardens around the site. You can see those here, 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 really strategically placed in green areas that we're proposing, again, to handle flow, retain it, sorry, not retain it, but to clean it and then release it downstream. And likewise, we're proposing a couple of underground sand filters where we do not have the space to provide above-ground stormwater quality. And those sand filters do the same thing. They get cleaned regularly, but the water goes down, filters. Any of the sediment gets trapped in that sand layer and then it gets, you know, replaced again at regular intervals. So that's generally what we're proposing. Again, there's a lot of details here. There's a lot of grading here, as you can see. Everyone knows the topography of the site. There's a lot going on. Happy to get into more detail in smaller group sessions. But for now, you know, that's the general concept of what we're proposing through stormwater management. Moving on to right-of-way and how we set the right-of-way dimensions and the street sections. So we worked with RJ Eldridge and Tool Design Group to help us develop those street sections across the site. And again, the focus of that being on safe pedestrian and bike movements and decreasing speeds through vehicular traffic. As we know, that the hospital drive is used as cut-through traffic. And really what we wanted to do is create pinch points, difficulties, you know, put in street parking, put in street trees to try to discourage, you know, people driving quickly through the site and using it as a cut-through. So really briefly, and we've seen these slides before, so I'm going to get to sort of the, get to the good stuff pretty quickly here. The, there's a lot in here. Let me just get to. All right. So we're proposing a number of different sections across the site. Each of these colored lines represents a different right-of-way section. Again, you'll have these presentations. You can dig into it, dig into it further on your own time. But wanted to give a quick overview of the type of cross-sections we're proposing. We are using the Prince George's Urban Street Design Standards as a model, yet not following it exactly in a number of areas and really focus on this neighborhood connector cross-street. It's for medium-density land uses, heavy pedestrian bike activity, you know, allows for bus traffic in certain areas, focused on slow speeds. And, you know, all of those things we're looking for at the site and is what we are focused on with the street sections. And I'll move to the primary street section because I think that's the most important one. So again, this is coming from the stop sign where currently you can turn right through the site under the existing garage up to the Village Green. So this is, again, the primary retail street, the grand avenue, if you will, of the site. And we are looking at a really grand street section, you know, focused on, again, safe movements of bikes and pedestrians. So as we just work from one side to the other, it's six-feet sidewalk on the townhome side, which would be the east side, a six-foot landscaping and furnishing furniture zone, again, street trees, trash receptacles, benches, things like that, an eight-foot on-street parking lane, an 11-foot travel lane to allow for bus traffic, another 11-foot travel lane, so two one-way travel lanes, another side of street parking, and then another landscaping and furniture zone. And as you keep working, there is a 10-foot separated two-way bike lane. So that's off-street protected bike lane, again, for safe movements from the town of Chevrolet for folks with kids or anyone who wants to bike to the site and get to the Village Green. And then on the other side of that, we have an eight-foot sidewalk, again, really focused on activating that street front on the west side where we are proposing the retail that's fronting the Village Green to provide a really nice-feeling, safe sidewalk and for families, for, you know, mobility-impaired folks, for everyone. And then the last thing that I had skipped over but want to hit quickly is the bike paths through the site and the ultimate connection to the Anacostia Riverwalk Trail. So as we have presented before, we wanted to make sure, right now, this hospital site really serves as a barrier from, you know, folks biking from the east and the north to the Anacostia River Trail. And we wanted to make sure that we provided for really safe access from the town of Chevrolet through the site to the Anacostia River Trail. And what we focused on is providing both on-street and off-street bike lanes, again, focused on limiting the amount of conflicts with vehicular traffic down to the south. And then as part of our projects, we're proposing off-street bike and ped impacts to Pepsi Place and Lydell Road. Right now, that's a really, really wide right-of-way. It's used by all of the truck traffic from the different industrial uses over there. So looking at skinning that up potentially and providing, again, you know, either on-street but protected bike lanes or off-street two-way mixed-use bike paths down to 201. And that's where I know there's been a lot of conversations around potentially, you know, working with SHA and working with potentially federal dollars to make a connection to the Anacostia River Trail, which we are fully in support of and think it would be an absolute benefit to the town of Chevrolet, to our site, to the, you know, to the broader region. So that's been a high focus of us and you'll see that again So that's been a high focus of us and you'll see that again in the preliminary plan docs that'll be sent over. The last, last piece that is again, an engineering document that I just want to touch on, this, this is more technical, so we don't need to get into it here, but it's the HPA. So that is the hydraulic planning analysis that WSSC does based again, on our density, looking at usage of water and sewer off-site to ensure that it's maintaining adequate water pressure for both our site and off-site and then make sure sewer capacity is, you know, it meets sewer capacities standards. Like I mentioned at the very start, we are looking at developing the project in phases. What you'll see is part one, part two, part three. That represents the different phases of the project that really is we're proposing right now. And for each of them, we will just be building utilities, the water in the sewer, et cetera, within those different phases. Again, technical document, we've run it through, we provide it to WSSC and then they do their hydraulic modeling based on what they know about, you know, downstream and off-site conditions, water pressures. And as we understand it, you know, everything's checking out and there's no, no capacity or pressure concerns from WSSC. All right. That's, you know, that's really the, the key documents that I wanted to go through again, just set the stage, let you all know what's going to be coming your way and, you know, go through at a high level, but would like to just open it up for any questions.
Okay. Thank you for that. So this was set up as a presentation for mayor and council. I want to make sure I get questions or comments from mayor and council if we have time. We'd like to probably hear from some audience members. I don't know if we'll be able to do that given how many folks are here. If you are online, please put your question in the chat because we can still get an answer to you.
Yep.
And then if we are not able to get to audience members, make sure you reach out to your council members or to the town to make sure we get answers to your questions. Okay? All right. Council? Councilmember Brennan?
Okay. So the plan hasn't been submitted yet?
The plan, the plan has been submitted, but we are still in the intake phase.
Okay. So it's not officially, officially submitted?
Exactly. It hasn't been accepted.
Okay. Can you talk a little more? Do you have a better sense of timeline in terms of weeks until we get our, until our 30-day clock starts ticking?
Yeah. So we are going to make our next submission actually tomorrow. And then I would expect since we've only made one so far, that we'll get another round of comments and that'll come in two or three weeks and then we'll probably need another two or three weeks to respond to those and then potentially two weeks later. So adding that up, you know, call it six to eight weeks from now.
Until our clock starts?
Exactly.
Okay. And do you expect there to be substantial changes from what you're showing us?
No, no. The comments that we received were relatively minor and it was, you know, it was honestly a lot of focus on right-of-way sections and again, those approved. So we've done more work there. Certainly not substantial changes and from an engineering standpoint, we've gone through multiple submittals in each of those and those comments have again, become very, very minor.
Great. Thank you.
Yep.
Councilmember Watson?
Thank you. Can you say a word about the ownership mix of the 1350 units? And then also on the, another definition of the word ownership, can you talk about like your, just briefly, the development plan and, and how you will begin to change ownership of parcels from the county?
Yep. Both very good questions. So we are proposing, I'm trying to see if I have the specific numbers in here. I don't think I do. It is around 1,100 multi-family rental units of the 1350 total residential units. There's about 50 condos planned and then in the realm of 170 or so townhomes, which, and again, both condos and townhomes would be for sale and the apartment rental units would be rental. And then second question, so are my company, Urban Atlantic and Chuck's company at Home Team Five are going to both be doing the master development work, which is all of the horizontal planning and the entitlements. And then we will be releasing parcels to vertical component developers, which will also be our companies that do the vertical component development. So Urban Atlantic has built about $5 billion of residential units over the last 25 years. That's our bread and butter. That's our core business, wood frame residential. So, you know, that, that will all be us. Where we might bring in third parties to develop is the conversion of the office renovation and the hotel.
Councilmember Wade?
Thank you all again for coming. Just a couple of questions. I know we talked about in the past, it was most recently about the mitigation of the climate factors of dust, especially the individuals that are part of Ward One, those streets lock it as well. Can you speak to that and how that's being mitigated? And then the other aspect is the, the sound barrier aspects of 295. I for one, live off of 295 on the other side. I hear any accident that comes off the highway and also just me talking, not just with Ward One residents, but individuals that live off of 50. In the past, it was promised to them by the county that there would be a sound barrier over there, but it never was done. So making sure that the environmental noise, I know you mentioned the fact that you will have the natural brushes and environment there, but the level of sound as a person that hears it every day, coming off of 295 for those residents living over there. So those are the two main questions. If you can speak to those questions, thank you.
Yeah, of course. First, with the potential dust mitigation or the dust mitigation at the active demo site. So we have instructed our demo contractor, Berg, to have a, anytime they're working on any aggregate piles or dust pile, or not dust piles, waste piles that are on-site, to be running multiple hoses. And that's, you know, the, the primary method for dust suppression while they're actively working is water suppression. So they spray water to tamp down the, any dust that might kick up while they're working there. Previously, they were running one hose. We've made sure that from now on, they'll be running two hoses. Also, as those aggregate piles sit there today, we, we've just released them to spray a biodegradable, you know, solution that basically creates a crust on top of the aggregate piles so that, you know, if, if it's just sitting there, they're not working on it, but there's heavy winds, they will, it, it traps in, you know, any of that dust that might blow off of it. And then we've also installed air quality control monitors on the fence line. We have the results of the, the first three days of, of that from when they've been working on-site. Happy, I've, I've shared them previously with Chuck and I think the town has them now. So anyone who, who wants to take a look, happy to share. And, you know, demolition is, I would say, a dustier activity rather than new development. Just because you're taking things down, you're working with massive scrap piles, et cetera. That's why you run, run the water suppression. I wouldn't expect this to be an issue moving forward. They've completed the vertical demolition, but within the interim at least, we've made sure to take, take those steps.
And if I could add too, when it comes to mitigation, our neighbors or anyone who has, has an issue or a question can reach out to Teddy or myself at, at any time and we're more than happy to do whatever is necessary. You know, this is one of the things that we have with Chevrolet residents involved in this project is, is because our kids are breathing the same air too. So this is important to us.
And then with regards to the noise mitigation at those properties close to 295. So we will get a noise study done and it's got to be on a weekday during rush hour. They do it for 24 hours when there should be normal traffic, so not, not during a holiday or anything like that. And that will tell us what those noise levels are, is that ambient noise from 295 is. And then we'll design any residences that are, you know, within that mitigation zone to a standard where they won't, you know, it certainly won't impact their quality of life. Ultimately, it's, it's a lot of our risk if we don't design it appropriately because we have to rent those units, we have to sell those townhomes. So we, we'll make sure that we design, again, window specs, wall specs, specs, et cetera, to a standard that, you know, that makes it not a hindrance on their quality of life.
All right. I want, want to thank you for being so responsive when it came to mitigating the dust factors. That was brought to me in one of the, the mayor's hours and we got lots of detail about how they had been having negative experiences for a while and we just weren't told. So it's good that you all responded right away and that you remain available for that. I have a question about this noise mitigation and sort of tying it to the traffic studies. At some point, if we're having 1,350 new possible residents, I would assume it's probably about times two or three, we're also adding just that many vehicles as well. So what does that study look like in terms of considering that, that we don't have that extra, extra added variable just yet?
Yeah. So it's really focused mostly on 295, the noise study itself. I will take that question to both the noise consultant and our traffic engineer to see if, you know, if that's something they can factor in. I suspect again, without having looked into this, that, that even that level of traffic, you know, peak hour counts is, it doesn't approach what is heard on 295, especially at the speeds they travel there, which just creates more noise.
Okay. Anything else from mayor and council? All right. We've got about eight minutes and if I could have council's indulgence, I would like to get the comments or questions from folks online. Is anyone raising their hand online?
Do you want me to read it out? It's a comment from resident Joel. "I appreciate that you took time to address the potential for a bicycle path from Chevrolet to the Anacostia Bike Trail. I use this daily. My current route is the sidewalk on 202 and recently, the Maryland SHA proposed closing a lane of 202/450 to Bladensburg Park. They ruled out using the Kennelworth approach because there was limited ROW and you have to cross the CSX tracks, which they viewed as problematic. I prefer the 202/450 option. Do you have a viable ROW via Kennelworth?"
I wish RJ was here to answer that. That's, he, he's been leading that charge and honestly through Tool rather than through our development and keeping us aware, but that's an answer we can get back to unless Chuck has one.
And maybe I can add a little, a little bit to that. The right-of-way that we're looking at and along with the state to alternative comes off of, off the site with a protected lane on Kennelworth, on the east side of Kennelworth in the short term would involve a dramatically lighted and gated crossing in Kennelworth itself and then down 52nd Place to the Anacostia Trail where we'd pick up where the Anacostia Trail Society keeps their boats right now. That's, there's that little entrance. The CSX tracks, they're obviously not going anywhere, but there are also ways to, there's a lot of bike trails that cross tracks in this area.
This is a question from Ken. "Are there any wastewater concerns since there are some creeks in the area? Also, Tuxedo Road tends to flood."
No wastewater concerns. The, all of the wastewater will be contained within the sanitary sewer system that we are proposing. For a flooding, from a flooding perspective, again, we are going to be providing stormwater controls that get it to pre-existing conditions. So prior to the development of the hospital, right now, there are no stormwater controls on-site. So it hits that massive bank of impervious area and flows right off as quickly as it possibly can. Providing the stormwater controls and the stormwater quality controls will really help mitigate downstream issues as opposed to, to current conditions.
It looks like he had another question about wetland issues.
He had a follow-up about wetland issues, asking if there were any.
No wetland issues. The two, they identified small parts of, small areas of wetlands on-site, both far from our developable footprint. We're staying generally as, you know, you know, a site strategy, we are staying away from steep slopes, heavily wooded areas and those, those two small wetland areas are both steep slopes and heavily wooded.
Councilmember Wade?
Yeah, I would ask the mayor and council to, if it's possible, to support a motion to push the work session back by 20 minutes to make sure that the individuals here can answer their questions, for them to take the timeouts, if that's possible.
I, I would have asked for council's indulgence for a few minutes to get three questions since we got three online. It's up to council, but we do have a work session right after this.
So are we, can I put a motion? I would like to put a motion on the floor for 20 minutes.
There's, there's a motion for 20 minutes?
So I would, I would like to make a motion to push the work session back from 7:30 to 7:50, giving the individuals behind us as well as online 20 extra minutes in order to inquire about this particular development.
Is the motion on the floor? Is there a second?
Second.
Right. There's been motion and a second. Any discussion? Is there a suggestion you want to make or change the motion request? Councilmember Brennan?
I think 15 minutes should probably cover it. I just want to make sure that we're not leaving the people who are coming in for the work session online high and dry, but I, I support no matter what the time.
That is a suggestion to your motion. Do you want to entertain the suggestion and modify your motion?
I just, I just want to make sure that 20 minutes will be, I think a five-minute difference. What, it's, it'll be a hard stop at 7:50, so to make sure we have enough time, that would be the 20 minutes.
All right. We have a motion. Second, any further discussion? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. The ayes have it. For folks who are physically present, again, this was set up as a meeting, as a presentation to mayor and council, so we're not set up for people to come up and give comment. So what I'll ask is that folks who have their hands raised, if you will come, we still need to make sure the interpreters can hear you. So if you'll come up to the, the mic here and make sure that you're heard and leave your, if you'll have your questions be just 60 seconds, that'll let us get through as many people as possible. State your name, ward, and then keep your comment or question to 60 seconds.
My name is Catherine Abbott. I'm from Ward One and I'm a Lockwood resident. You did a beautiful job showing your grand avenue, but the bone of contention between what's going on there is those two access roads at Lockwood and Inwood. And I didn't see what your plan was for those access and, and I'm not sure about the timeline as far as Chevrolet approving our side of it. So that's what I would like you to address.
Yeah, absolutely. So we are working on developing that right-of-way section now. We just went out and had the additional, had the town sides of those roads surveyed and the intent is to match, match the town right-of-way and town sidewalk. So it, it feels like the same road, again, really focused on just local traffic. We, we're keeping, I believe we're showing a 50-foot right-of-way there. Again, two travel lanes, sidewalks on each side with a small landscape area. And then timing, that's really up to, up to the town. We are going to be showing these connections and it's an opportunity for the town to provide formal comment to park and planning as to whether they are in support of those, those right-of-way connections.
My name is Matt. I'm a, I'm a Lockwood resident. My name is Matt. I'm a Lockwood resident as well. I'm one of the people that had respiratory issues, so paying attention to that is really important to me. It hurt my family, so please keep an eye on that. You demonstrated so well the new streets and similarly, they're, they look beautiful. I'm wondering not just about the connection space, but the entirety of Lockwood is quite thin and you And you showed how we need the capacity for wider streets for the increased capacity. So I'm wondering how we're going to manage that, not just the whole of Lockwood, the whole of Inwood, all the way down, you know, the, the streets are thin. How are we going to manage the increased traffic? My other question, the, the site now shows that the main road connects directly to Lockwood. I'm not sure if that was different than before, the main road in the body of the development. And I was wondering if that was different, if that was considered during the traffic study, or if that's a different flow. And it looks beautiful. So, yeah, those are my main questions.
Yeah, absolutely. So the connections themselves to that main road have not changed from when the traffic study was done. We haven't made any large changes to the street network at all, really just around the right-of-way sections themselves. And then as for the roads on the town side, you know, we are committing to off-site bike and ped impact improvements through our development. You know, that's where we've made a proposal at Pepsi Place and Lydell, you know, focusing those efforts there. We can look at that and potentially widening of sidewalks if there's room, you know, with homes, obviously, and, and existing property lines, there's only so much room there. But we can look at also providing some mitigation for town of Chevrolet sidewalks, bike lanes, anything like that, anything bike and ped focused, we can take into consideration.
Okay, my name is Diana Derby. I am on Greenleaf in Ward One, and I have the same Lockwood-Inwood question. Lovely street proposal, schematic with all the different widths. Lockwood is not currently to code for what you're proposing, is it? The width of it?
Yeah, I, I'm not sure. I know it is a tight street, though.
No, it's not to code.
Okay.
Just, I mean, you take my word for it, I'm not an engineer, but I have research. It's not to code. It's, there's also codes, local, county, and state for driveway access. You cannot have driveways that feed directly into what your grand street proposal is. So if you're going to mimic that grand street on Lockwood, I guess you're going to take people's front yards and then their driveways, which they won't be able to pull out into the street because that's not legal.
I, the point of clarification, we are not, we are not planning to mimic that grand avenue on the connections to Lockwood and Inwood.
Okay.
It is going to be a much pared-down right-of-way section, just two travel lanes, a, a
No street parking.
Landscape buffer, no street parking and
No bike path.
And off-street sidewalk. No, no bike path.
So you're, you're still going to take people's front yards?
No, that's just on the development side of the, of the, of the property.
The development side?
There's no change to Lockwood?
No.
Or Inwood?
Okay, the width of Lockwood will remain the same?
Will remain the same. We, we have no jurisdiction over
Don't you have to have some, you know, permission for that? Because it's not, it's not the legal width for what you're talking about.
That is a town, a town road that we're just connecting to, you know, what happens on the town side. Again, you know, if there is, if there is a want to improve sidewalks, things like that, again, we have, you know, we have funds set aside for off-street bike and pedestrian improvements.
Right.
But in terms of the right-of-way section or anything like that, we're not proposing to make any changes to the town side.
Okay. So, and do you have a proposal where it would be 100% car-free?
That connection?
Mm-hmm.
We, we think those vehicular connections are important for the vitality of the retail on-site, but again, that is a fully town of Chevrolet
Right, and for, the, the retail is
Where a ton.
4,000 square feet?
Forty thousand.
Forty thousand, that's like two Chipotle's.
It's not two Chipotle's, but I, I understand your concern.
It is, they're, the large
Mail, where a ton.
Twenty thousand square feet. So, I mean, it's delusional to imagine that this is going to be a big developed retail site. It's just not. And we don't need cars to go between here and there. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's David Tansey. I'm in Ward Four, not on Lockwood. And I want to ask a little bit of a follow-up to what council member Watson said about the ownership breakdown, both if you could repeat it, because I want to make sure I heard it properly, but if the apartment buildings are being built in a way that they could be converted to condos at some future date, or if they're being designed with shared utilities and things like that, so that whatever the line is, it is sort of permanently?
Yeah, so tackling the first question first, the ownership of each of the vertical component developments, so each of the different apartment buildings or townhouse blocks, et cetera, will be performed by the same group doing all of the horizontal infrastructure and entitlement work. You know, really, it, it's a mechanism through which we can get started on the infrastructure without having to purchase the entire piece of land that we've, that we worked through with the county. So Chuck and I's companies will go out and will finance and build all of the infrastructure, roads, et cetera, and then will separately finance the apartment buildings, each of the individual apartment buildings. The second question, whether they can be converted to condos. Each of those units will be on sub-meters for water and electric. You know, they're certainly going to be built as apartment rentals to say they could never become condo conversions, you know, that, they could become condo conversions, but that's not the business plan.
Michelle Carl, Ward Three. Michelle Carl, Ward Three. I'm wondering how come you didn't give more thought to home ownership opportunities instead of making it 75% rental?
Yeah, so we tried to come up with a balance of, looking at the site, a balance of rental and townhomes that satisfy a couple of different things. The first off is bringing the amount of density to the site that allows us to pay for all of the infrastructure required. So that's bringing more units to the site. And condominiums right now are a really struggling asset class of, of real estate versus single-family townhomes or apartment rental. So, you know, that, that is decision A. And then when you look at townhomes, you know, yielding those, the boundary areas, the, the areas that don't support that level of density to try to bring as many for-sale units as possible. And early on in the project, we're bringing more townhomes than condos in our first phase. That proportion's going to be more like, you know, 35, 65%.
But it is basically 75% rental?
That, that's right.
Okay. Last question, for the, as you were saying, the commercial space is going to be about maybe five businesses? Forty thousand square feet doesn't come out too many.
Yeah, so business, it depends what type of retailer, a restaurant is usually four to 6,000 square feet, somewhere in there. If you have a, you know, a wine shop, that might be as little as 2,000. We're working with our retail consultants now to develop a retail merchandising plan that looks at carving it up and, you know, what that mix of tenants that can succeed here wants to be.
What, what do you envision?
I envision at least two restaurants, you know, probably one quicker serve, one more of a sit-down dining establishment, and then a lot of neighborhood serving retail, so things like the wine shop, yoga studio, fitness studio, things like that, and then a small urban grocer. And we're also, we're working on a, a food hall concept with Prince George's County Community College, working with their culinary group to, to bring a food hall concept to, you know, allow their, their students entrepreneurial opportunities to start their own stand as, you know, as
That sounds cool. So maybe six to eight businesses?
It's, it's tough to pin down right now, but
Okay.
Somewhere in there.
Yep, thanks.
We are at 7:41. Is there anyone else in person? Speak now, forever hold your peace. Come right on up. I believe there's one more question that came online. Okay, great. Oops.
Good evening. Joyce Jones, Ward Two. Just a quick thank you for coming tonight and sharing your time, and just a quick comment because I'm confused. This was advertised, you know, in our, in our newsletter and on our website, that it was, it was, it was an update, and I see all of my neighbors here, and I'm confused because it seems like if it was not designed for community input, then it should have specifically said, this is supposed to be a mayor and council update only and public input isn't, isn't welcome. So I didn't feel that it was a real engagement there. I wanted to thank you for extending the time so we could ask our questions. Thanks.
Okay, anything else online? Councilmember Brennan? Nope. All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Oh, wait, is that a question?
Were you, were you coming forward?
Oh.
There, there's someone else that would like to ask a question.
I withdraw my motion.
Were you coming for Hospital Hill? Come on, we have more time. Go right ahead. One second, ma'am. I'm going to ask that you withdraw your motion because it is on the floor. Okay, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Jay Joyner and would like to address, a little bit closer? All right. Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. I'm Jay Joyner and would like to address solar lighting on Hospital Drive, it may be renamed by now, at the bus stops, the grassy lot between there and the underpass. I have taken a bus and had to walk that route. Unfortunately, there was snow packed on the sidewalk. My foot slipped and I ended up sprawled out on the street. A car came spiraling around the corner. Gratefully, I'm here to share my harrowing experience and to campaign for the safety of others. So I'm just looking for solar lighting down that area where the bus stops are and, and for the underpass, because you do have apartment buildings and people may need public transportation. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, I don't see any more hands. All right, I will entertain a motion.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
And motioned and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you all for coming. Thank you, Home Team Five.
Thank you.
Keep doing that while we still can. LED street lighting.
So Mayor, I'm going to turn it over to Director Berman, if you don't mind to make the introduction to introduce this subject, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Galloway. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Town Council, and Town of Sheverly. I'm pleased tonight to be joined by Ms. Sue Ellen Ferguson. I believe I reported a while back that Pepco was coming forward with taxing staff on helping them out with an inventory of their streetlights. There's been an initiative to switch to LED lights for some time. Ms. Ferguson's been involved with this for years. There are some decisions coming forward, not tonight. And so I've asked Ms. Ferguson to give a five or 10,000-foot view of where we're at now and where we're moving forward. She's working with, I think, seven other municipalities. And she's the expert in some of the calls that Pepco has had. She certainly is on the point, and she's already sitting at the table with Pepco. But I'm not going to try to get ahead of her. So I would just like to let Ms. Ferguson go through some of the aspects of the initiative, some of the options, and some of the decisions that will be coming forward to us.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for having me this evening. And please interrupt with questions whenever you care to. There are two parts to this, what we're talking about tonight. One is the streetlight count. That is the result of a complaint that was filed by Al Carr, a former House delegate in Maryland who lives in Montgomery County, filed with the Public Service Commission indicating to them that Pepco really did not have good records for what streetlights were where and who should be paying for them. And so the PSC ordered Pepco to do a full reconciliation of where the streetlights are and who should pay for them. And they've been doing that now for a number of months since the end of last year. They have, in each of the municipalities that I'm familiar with, is taken multiple meetings and a lot of staff time to come up with even the basic numbers. But they are starting to get there. They have required a lot of time from municipal officials and employees who are not ready for that particularly, but it's been moving along. The most recent one that I've been to, this is, I think, their fifth or sixth meeting with Pepco, and they've been out in the field on multiple occasions looking at lights. So very recently, Pepco came to the municipalities and said, "Oh, whoops, we've just found out from SHA, State Highway Administration, that they will not pay for their lights, their lights that shine on their rights-of-way, except at intersections." And they're expecting the local governments in whose jurisdictions those roads are to pay for them. They are not able to answer the question about whether or not the municipalities have been paying for those all along. We've asked for background as to why they would claim that the local governments are required to pay for those lights. And they still haven't come up with something definitive. We were supposed to get a letter from SHA. I've just found out today that there's no letter coming, that this has been kicked upstairs to the highest level, it's a quote, at SHA to start dealing with this issue. I have recommended to the folks that I'm representing that at this point, and some of them have so many State Highway Administration lights that it's upping their numbers by a quarter. So I've said that for right now, until we get some actual explanation of this, that you should dispute those. Because you're not going to get an answer to any questions unless you do. Otherwise, you're just going to be paying for them. So they are attempting to comply with a Public Service Commission order in locating these lights. It's been a good thing for the municipalities, too, in one respect. Pepco, up to this point, had only identified lights in their own system by latitude and longitude, not by address. And with the assistance of the municipalities, they now have addresses attached to them. So when something happens, you have a much better idea of where it is and what's going on and what you're being billed for. So they haven't done it voluntarily, but they are doing it now by order. The second piece of this is the part that I first started out with a couple of years ago, which is representing mostly municipalities in Montgomery County. College Park is part of the group also with a tariff proceeding that started. I don't know if you're aware, but for at least 15, 16 years, municipalities have been able to buy their lights of right from Pepco. Pepco has not been cooperative in that process and, in fact, never provided pricing or help in any way. When the tariff proceeding was filed, we objected on various grounds. Tariff proceedings set, through the PSC, the types of charges that Pepco can charge streetlight users. If it's not there, they can't charge for it. Our point to Pepco was, you have stonewalled us for so many years. It's impossible to buy these lights unless the PSC requires that you agree to certain agreements with this, like a sales agreement and pricing and a third-party attachment agreement. We're never going to get to buy the lights like we're allowed to do by law. The PSC agreed with that, in part because of all the counties in Maryland. And the PSC chair showed a picture, a satellite picture of all of Maryland. The rest of Maryland had blue lights. Pepco had yellow lights. It was the only two jurisdictions that still were a large majority for the old type of light, no LED installations. Pepco had not installed LED anywhere. They're still all with high-pressure sodium, which no one uses anymore. So over the last year and a half, two years, we've been negotiating with Pepco. We now have wording that's been approved by the Public Service Commission for a sales agreement, third-party attachment agreement. Third-party attachment agreement is, if you're going to be on a Pepco pole, they not only have to sell you the light, they also have to give you permission to be on it. So I think we've pretty much come to the end of that, and we think we have some agreed-upon wording for that. We do have an idea about how much the lights will cost. It's going to be based on net book value. I think Steve Berman has gotten some pricing from Pepco as to what the lights in Sheverly would cost. Sheverly has three options for you in this tariff. One is kayak. And it's not a boat. It's CIAC, and it's contribution in aid of construction. Comcast is, I'm sorry, Pepco is requiring that you pay for the lights to have the lights purchased and installed, the LED lights. Either you contribute to that purchase price at the very beginning. And they provided some information based on 100 lights, say, and I understand you have 500 lights. For the kayak, if you pay upfront to have these lights switched over to LED, it will cost you $1,587 per 100 lights. So it's not per 100, I'm sorry, per light. So if you had 100 lights, it's $158,700. And you can multiply that again by five, since you have 500. It's very expensive because you're paying Pepco, which has a considerable bureaucracy to put them in. The other way to do it is non-kayak. And what that means is, is that Pepco will buy the lights, and you will pay for them extra money every month for those lights forever. It's like mortgage or rent. You're renting those lights forever. It spreads the pricing out. It's still very expensive, but it spreads the pricing out over many years. If you ask, they will provide you with, eventually, provide you with a model or a template billing, what your billing might look like in both of these circumstances. The third option that you have is to buy the lights. Currently, the pricing for lights that are $19.90 or before that for the high-pressure sodium is $5 or less. You go back to $19.88, it's $3 and something. So you buy the, because of the way that Pepco has kept their books over the years and that you do have to pay them something, even though frankly, the high-pressure sodium lights aren't worth anything. But the PSC is on board with adopting a net book valuation for these lights. And the negotiating team has agreed to that. And there is a chart that Pepco has provided. For the LED lights that you have, those are much more expensive. So if you're going to buy your lights, you should buy them now. Don't pay a lot of money to Pepco to put them in and then buy them, because they'll charge you twice. So if you want ownership of these lights to reduce your costs, then I would buy them in the foreseeable future. LED lamps typically will last at least 70,000 hours, up to 100,000 hours, and that's 25 years. Once LED lamps are put in, the maintenance costs are very low. Your energy cost, what it costs to run that light, is much lower than high-pressure sodium. And so for those reasons, it's good to consider whether you wish to buy them or not. And like I said, you can get more information from Pepco. They have to give it to you as to what your monthly billing would look like on each of these options. A number of the municipalities are interested in buying their lights. We're still not receiving full information from Pepco. You do have an option, even if you own your own lights, to have them maintained by Pepco, which should cost a separate amount. And they haven't provided that amount yet for the tariff. Or you can have a private company do it. There are a number of systems you can look at. For examples, there are some in the Northeast and in the Midwest where municipalities, local governments have gotten together and have one company maintaining for them. They own their own lights, and the company maintains. With Pepco's setup, it's much more expensive for them to run your streetlights than it would be for you to own them and maintain them. That's just the bottom line of this. But it's up to you as to which of those three options you want to follow. I've thrown a lot of information at you, and I will take questions of what I've said. If there's anything that you would like to know more about tonight. My understanding from Mr. Berman is that this was just supposed to be an initial conversation to lay out for you what's been going on up to now. We are happy to report, as I said, that we have the two agreements negotiated. So you don't have to negotiate with Pepco as to what your contract will look like with them. And you don't have to negotiate with them as to how much your lights will cost, because they have to put out a chart and they have to go buy it. They also were previously wanting to charge the municipalities for looking at the lights and figuring out what the wattage is, looking at them up on the poles and doing a survey. They are no longer requiring that. If you want to buy your lights, they have to conduct the survey and provide the information so that you know from the chart what it would cost you to buy the lights. So the tariff, they're pushing to file the tariff very soon. And if we don't have all the information that we've been requesting from them, then a number of the municipalities will object to the tariff because it goes into effect 30 days after it's filed unless objections are filed. So do you have any questions?
Well, if I may, the good news is that the tariff hasn't been filed. Ms. Ferguson and I discussed earlier today. I would estimate 45 to 120 days is about the time that they may file it. And so we have some time to learn more about this and to make a decision. And also, too, I was actually expecting the lights for 25. But what I've heard back from Pepco is they cannot find any information as of yet on the age of our lights, which would have them be considered 1990 or older. I'm surprised they don't even know about the ones that we've recently purchased. Those we'd probably pay, they'd figure that out. But in calculating that, that's a very low dollar amount, and it's actually within our current budget. And as I understand it, we might have, or we would have the option. If we buy them, we don't have to immediately move forward with the converting them to LEDs, although I know people are interested in that. And basically, the cost savings of the electricity would, at some point, probably five to six years out, pay for an LED conversion when we get to that point. But with that, I just wanted to add that, and I apologize for jumping in. But you all probably have questions of Ms. Ferguson?
Mr. Berman, before we get to Ms. Ferguson, can you clarify? We have about 500 lights, and to do the conversion is already in our budget. Is that accurate?
No, what we have in our budget, we have a line item that is streetlight installs, repairs, and converts. And we have not had any numbers as of yet. But that line item is at $25,000. And when I calculate, I think we have about 550 lights. When I calculate 550 times 25, I think that's less than $3,000. The cost, I was actually thinking it was going to be $25 per light. But so we have the monies to move forward, I believe. But we don't have solid numbers from Pepco. I mean, this has been a very difficult, confusing aspect because Ms. Ferguson just said we're not required to give them wattage. But they're out there making us, telling them what wattage and what type of light it is and what type of head it is. And so we're nearing completion of that inventory with them. But one of the things I expect coming forward in the next month or two would be them giving us an actual price for purchasing the lights. Would that be right, Ms. Ferguson? Is what we'd be pushing for?
Yes, whatever components are involved in buying those lights and installing other lights is what you want to know. The cost that they would charge you to install an LED light is much more, at least three times more than you would pay just to have it done. And so they need to tell you what they're going to charge to have an LED light change out. And once you do change it out, of course, your electric costs go down considerably. I think it's by 75%.
And there we have, we budget $100,000 for the electricity. So right there, there would be a significant saving. So I think step one, though, is, is I just wanted to say, I understand step one would be looking at purchasing the lights. And so in the not-too-distant future, we'd be bringing forward, I think, numbers for purchasing. Maybe we'd have other numbers for converting. But I believe regularly, we have had a line item in our budget to cover for installs and repairs. And it's currently at $25,000. And it sounds like that is likely to cover the cost of purchasing the lights. And then I think we'll be in a position to map out how we actually want to. We're under no obligation to immediately move forward, but we'll be able to strategize how we actually convert the lights over time or however we can afford.
Okay, Council, Councilmember Delaker?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Okay, so I just wanted to get some clarification. So the kayak, so if we buy LED lights from Pepco, they're going to charge us $1,587 per light. But that's different from buying the lights ourselves. And when you say buy the lights, I've got prices for the sodium, the sodium lights. That's like five bucks or three bucks, right? But is there a way to get LED lights separately from, no, you can't?
Yeah, you can install them yourself later.
Yeah, you can get LED lights separately from Pepco? I.e., from a different source?
Oh, yes. You can put, as long as, you can contract with the company that does that, and they will, they won't allow that if they're going to keep the lights. You can do that only if you buy them. And then you can switch them out.
Okay.
And doing it not through Pepco is at least three times as cost-effective.
And I believe that's what some or most of the municipalities in Montgomery County are considering, if I'm correct on that.
Okay, follow-up question. Do we have a sense of prices of LED lights separate from buying them from Pepco? Do we, like, I heard the cost of sodium lights, which is, you know, cheap upfront and higher energy costs. But what about the, what if we were to get LEDs ourselves? Do we know? Do we have an idea?
I have some, I have some idea. I'm a lawyer. Now, I don't, I'm not in the business.
Right.
But from my understanding, we have been talking to people who have run systems in other places, and that they are able, have been able to do a conversion from high-pressure sodium to LED at less than $250 per fixture. And that's with a dimmer. So, and you want a dimmer because you can save money that way, too. So, and once installed, LEDs have a long half-life and a low maintenance cost. So, and of course, they use a lot less energy. Environmentally, it's the correct thing to do. And Pepco's been told by the PSC, they have to do it one way. It has to happen one way or the other. They've got to do it with the other lights. If people who don't buy their lights, they have to replace all the lights over to LED. They're using a bulb that nobody makes anymore. So just practically speaking, they have to do that.
Councilmember Watson?
Yes, I was just going to say, I would be happy to see on an upcoming work session agenda, an authorization to purchase the lights. Just purchase the lights from Pepco. And then I would, you know, suggest then that we could move out from there once that's done with, you know, cost-effective conversions as the budget allows.
Okay, I have a lot of questions, and I'm not sure if everybody else has them. But the quote that you just gave for $250, is that purchasing from Pepco?
No.
It's from a private company, different from Pepco?
That's if you purchase your lights. You would purchase your lights, and then you would buy LED, an LED lamp, and switch it out.
Okay.
Or the high-pressure sodium lamp that's there right now.
Just for that alone, for the 550 lights, adds up to $137,500. Now, we obviously are not switching out all of the lights at this, at one time. But if we're doing the authorization from Pepco, what is the cost from them per light?
It's $800.
If Pepco does it?
Yes.
Okay.
It's three times that quote-ish.
Well, I can show you, I can show you possibly, can I share screen? Can you see this?
Yes, ma'am.
What you should see is streetlights options for LED conversion. Okay, this was provided by Pepco. On the left, you can see where it says kayak. SSLOHLED, that's overhead LED. Kayak is that construction in aid of, I'm sorry, contribution in aid of construction. And they're saying that to upgrade 100 existing high-pressure sodium Cobra heads to LEDs at 50 watt will cost, per 100, $158,700. So you would multiply that number by five if you were going to pay your costs upfront to Pepco. They would still own those lights, by the way. But they wouldn't charge you over decades for putting them in, okay? On the right-hand side, there's no upfront cost from you, non-kayak. And so it's $15.17 per month, per light, forever, extra. So you're financing it. And I think Mr. Berman has a copy of this that he can distribute to you.
Actually, you're not. So if you could forward it to us.
Okay, I'll send it, I'll send it over. These are the two ways that you can do this through Pepco. You know, frankly, doing it through the kayak is so expensive that almost no one can really afford that. And you're paying, you're paying a lot for that service. It's a lot more than it actually costs to do it. So I'm going to stop sharing now unless you want me to keep that up.
If you can hold it for one second, because that created four more questions for me. So that's great. Can you, so if I calculate non-kayak, right, and just say, you know, this holds us to, this gets us to LED lights, and let's say we do that for, these are from 1990, what we presently have, somewhere close to that. So let's say we calculate for 50 years. And my total that I've spent extra is $75,850, and I still have a lower light bill. Is that correct?
I'm sorry, I lost you. Are you referring, for some reason, the microphone, your microphone, I'm not able to hear very well. I can hear everybody else's fairly well, but not yours. So if you're talking about one of these two options here, then there's an upfront cost. You don't own the lights, but you don't have to pay for them over time, which is even more expensive. On the right, you haven't paid anything upfront to them, but they are charging you for those lights. It's just going to be over many years. They're going to charge you extra every month for every light. So if you have 500 plus lights, multiply that by $15.17 for each, each year, each month.
So hold on one second. The $15.17 is per light?
Yes.
All right. Per month, so we pay, this is extra, $8,343 a month?
You would pay $15.17 times 500, whatever that comes out to be.
Uh huh. Per month?
Yes.
So...
Extra, that's extra. Other than, that doesn't take into consideration operation and maintenance or your power costs or any of that. It's just so they'll put an LED light in.
Okay, so if I look at kayak upfront, I'm looking at something like 800...
Okay, so if I look at kayak upfront, I'm looking at something like $850,000, almost a million dollars, correct?
You're right, yeah, yes.
All right, if I look at non-kayak over a 25-year period, I'm looking at paying $2 million for some lights.
Yes.
And can you tell me what is the significance of Pepco owning the light? Does that help me in some way?
It's their system. That's the way it works.
So do I care if they own the light? Because if I own the light, if I purchase it from a private company, then Pepco no longer owns the light, correct?
You cannot, you cannot, as a local government, put your own light through someone else on the pole unless you have purchased the streetlight from Pepco.
Okay, and the cost to purchase the streetlight from Pepco is?
I don't know the, the dates of your, they have to give you a survey and tell you what the dates on your lights are, or they can just concede and say, you know, it's five, five dollars or less. So, five dollars or less.
Okay, so to purchase all of my streetlights is approximately $3,000?
Could be more. Let's round up and say five.
Okay, I'm fine with that. $550 times five dollars is $2,750, but I'm fine with five. And so what we're saying is, what it looks like to me is, it is better for us to purchase all of our lights and then do a private system, because it's less than $2 million, and it's less than $850,000.
Point well taken.
Okay, all right, I think that's all my questions. Councilmember Bremen?
But if we own the system, what does that do in terms of our capacity to, for upkeep and maintenance? We would be responsible for that? So, like, you can't do this math in your head, Mr. Bremen, but what does that look like in additional costs?
I believe that's something that we need to explore more. I, I'm hoping, there's seven municipalities, I'm hoping to join this consortium, I'm gonna call it, with Ms. Ferguson. You may, you may or may not know, Ms. Ferguson has handled the cable franchise agreements for most of the municipalities in Prince George's County, I think, through two rounds. And so, I'm hoping that this group grows. But the LEDs needing less maintenance, and trying to get a service company, you know, utilizing like cooperative purchasing or a group of us, that it would be cost-effective. But I think that is something that we need to, need to explore more. But, but I believe that there are municipalities that are already convinced, and I believe there is a gentleman who has lent his services to help them learn that servicing these can be efficient, cost-efficient, even through, when you're owning them and you're a single municipality.
Through a private company, yes. That is possible to do. Also, Pepco is supposed to be providing as part of the TARA, like I said. They can't charge for something that hasn't been identified in the TARA. So, they're, they have said they may be willing to offer maintenance, and they're supposed to provide a price for that, so that you could compare it to a private company doing it. We've been trying to get them to nail it down as to what, if there's any other fees that they want to have for buying these lights and being able to switch out the light. We've been able to get them to agree that they will not charge make-ready charges or any of that type of thing, or survey charges or application fees for switching out the light from high-pressure sodium to LED, because that's why the municipalities, and one of the reasons they're buying them, is to get that done quickly, and to get the charges for power to come down. So, they're not charging for that. They're saying they want to do a disconnect switch, which we're gonna be fighting with them about. It's not a, you know, it's not a huge number, but it's still, we think, a fee that they want to charge that they shouldn't be able to charge, because it's got no value. But we're still tussling about that one. But you can have either a private company maintain, or you can have Pepco maintain. Once they give you the number as to what that's gonna cost, you can compare. My guess is, is that they will cost a good deal more, just because they're, they have such a bureaucracy in their system.
But there still are several moving parts, and this is one of the reasons why I wanted to give you an upstream. And as you can tell, Ms. Ferguson is well more versed than, on this than I am. In fact, I believe she's probably the most well-versed person on this, except for former delegate Carr.
Ms. Ferguson, it sounds like you're on the advocacy end as well. I have a really hard time paying for other people's dysfunction. If we identify lights that Pepco does not know we have, because they have kept such poor records, why should we pay them for that light?
Because you, well, you know, each jurisdiction has its own fact pattern. And you will deal with that as works out best for you. I would prefer not to actually discuss that on camera.
Okay, Councilmember Dallicker, and then Watson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to make a preaching-to-the-choir comment. We had, you know, we had folks from Pepco try to talk about household saving costs, and there's the, the, the devices that they put to do load-bearing, so it will shut your AC off, you know, and so there's an, clearly there's an incentive that they have to manage the load on their system. So, but, but, you know, apparently you can make money off of having sodium lights, these ancient sodium lights from the previous century. So this is just a complaining, preaching-to-the-choir comment, but I really feel like, in a future, in a future session when we're talking to Pepco, we should bring that up and say, hey, you know, why is this not in your interest to, to, you know, help municipalities as well as individual households save energy? Thank you, and I yield.
I would, I'll just add that I think, yeah, I mean, I agree with all of that. I think if we have a certain number, we have a subset of our lights that they don't know about. Let's say it's 25 lights, I don't know. But 25 is a good round number. I would rather them, pay them $125 for those 25 lights, because if I don't, I can never upgrade those 25 lights. Otherwise, they'll probably find out during the upgrade process that they own them. You know, so in other words, we could never take independent action to upgrade those 25 lights without paying the $125 to buy them, because we're likely to get caught.
Okay, um, the last thing I just want to offer everyone at the table is just a quick calculation, which is our budget for our electric bill for the year is $100,000. And if we were to consider the non-kayak form where we have the additional fee, that's literally our entire budget for our electric, just to pay that additional fee. So neither one of those are feasible options, in terms of just our budget alone. Ms. Ferguson, I would like to hear from you offline, your opinions later on, because I really, I don't care if it's $125. It's irritating to me to pay for other people's poor documentation. So if there's other ways around that, I would certainly like to know what it is, even if it's through policy or advocacy from the General Assembly side. Is there any more questions or comments at the table? No? Okay, this is a work session, so we actually do have time set out for resident input. If you are a resident and you would like to provide input on this particular topic, you can come forward. Please state your name, your ward, and keep your comment or question to three minutes. I think that one, I think that one's...
Thank you, Leila Riazzi, Ward 1. Thank you so much, Ms. Ferguson, for, thank you so much, Ms. Ferguson, for sharing this information. One of the things that I want to bring forward for mayor and council to consider is to step beyond the cost to actually doing, as you move forward with this, to doing a robust look at what lighting you're choosing and where it's placed, the wattage of the lighting. I know back in 2018, when communities were looking at this, and it was a whole different financial picture then, as Ms. Ferguson probably knows. Tacoma Park was one of the first communities to move forward with this. And they did a study, you know, there were some concerns about blue light and all of these things. But really what came out, and if you see their resolution, what they moved forward with, there's some important considerations in there. One, they chose 3,000 Kelvin lighting. They made sure that the wattage was specific to the need. Some of the lights were over watt, wattage for the need. They also worked with, you know, the current fixtures on the street relating to light trespass, as far as how the lights were coordinated, and then also to use shielding that was available, that Pepco was able to provide, so that you weren't throwing and having the light trespass. Also in the idea of trying to make sure that we are not exacerbating, you know, light throwing to the sky and having dark-skinned compliant lighting, however possible, using some of that shielding. So please, you can look at Tacoma Park's resolution that they passed back in 2018 for, for establishing their LED lighting. And there are other, you know, other municipalities that you could look at in this, in this process. There's also information, I'm sure, through MML, of the communities that have come before, and what some of the challenges they've faced, the mistakes they made. And if you reach out to Tacoma Park, you can get a full, and there was a committee here, I think at the time chaired maybe by Norm Oslick, that went deep into the look of LED lighting replacement, the good, the bad, and, and the ugly, and trying to avoid the bad and the ugly. The picture has vastly improved. So I'm, I'm really, really thankful that Ms. Ferguson came forward with information. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Please come forward.
Good evening, Joyce Jones, Ward 2. Thank you so much, Ms. Ferguson. I have a question for you, because I'm not sure I understand things, or maybe a clarification, and that is, when you talk about the consortium, would that allow for both maybe better prices in purchasing of the lights themselves, and also in the future for maintenance contracts? If the consortium got together for both of those things? And I also have a comment when she's done.
The, it won't affect the price that Pepco's gonna charge? That's an accounting measure?
I'm talking about if the lights are purchased independently, to try to get a better price by having a volume.
You know, I, I said a little earlier, I'm the lawyer. I know that there are companies out there that do this. I've talked to people who've used them. But I don't know what can be negotiated depending, it's gonna depend on numbers, I'm sure.
Okay, okay, thank you. And then I just had a quick comment. Last fall, Sheila Salo, the Chair of the Green Infrastructure Committee, myself on the Green Infrastructure Committee, went to four different towns as part of a Sustainable Maryland tour. And one of the towns we went to, Washington Grove, talked about this issue. And I brought it actually to Mr. Galloway, who referred me to Mr. Bremen. And I just wanted to give a shout-out, that I was not surprised to find that our, our town already knew about this issue and was in the process of going through it. So I was, you know, hoping I was bringing some exciting new stuff to them, but they were already on top of it, so I had to give, I had to give a shout-out to Mr. Bremen and Mr. Galloway for that. Thank you so much. Oops.
Anyone else at this table? In person? Online? All right, thank you so much, Ms. Ferguson.
If I may, Madam Mayor, I just wanted to let you know, I plan to continue to work with Ms. Ferguson on refining our feedback to Pepco, analyzing it, and bringing forward to you more details in the not-too-distant future.
Mr. Bremen, I have full confidence in you. If you could bottle up my frustration similar to that of WSSC, and give Pepco a little dose of it, that'd be great.
Thank you very much.
Have a great night, Ms. Ferguson. Thank you for joining us.
All right, Mr. Galloway?
Mayor and council, good evening. The Office of Human Rights notified us last minute that they will not be attending this evening. So, they've asked to be put on the April work session. So I will confirm that in April.
All right, well with that, my apologies to our Chevrolet Community Market. I know that you logged on at exactly 7:30, so I really appreciate your patience. We were still in our special meeting. But if you're still on, we'd love to hear from you about your grant requests.
So Mayor, I had a conversation with Erin earlier this week, and this grant is, okay, I'm sorry, there she goes.
Thank you for your patience.
She's rejoined as a panelist.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. So I am here from the Chevrolet Community Market. We are seeking to receive a town grant this year to continue our benefits match program. In the past, we have supported a match for the Town of Chevrolet residents who receive nutritional benefits at the market. And what we do with the match is that when residents of Chevrolet spend nutritional benefits at the market, for example, if someone was to use SNAP, or WIC, or the farmer's market nutritional benefits that are available for seniors, we provide them with a match. So if someone's gonna say spend $30 in SNAP benefits, we would give them $30 of match that is provided by Maryland Market money, and then we also supplement that with grant funds from the Town of Chevrolet, that would be $10 per person, which is just a flat match. Or we also do a match from our own fundraising for anyone who attends the market, because we do have people who visit the market that don't necessarily live in Chevrolet. So we are seeking that grant to continue doing that match. So I don't know if y'all have specific questions, or if you wanted me to go into more details about how it works, but that's the overall request. And the grant request is for $2,000, which is what we've asked for in the past.
All right, thank you, Erin. I know that we have supported this many, many times, certainly for our good cause. Mr. Galloway, did you have a recommendation?
Yeah, I recommend that mayor and council move forward with putting this on the agenda for approval.
Is that a consent agenda item?
On the consent agenda item, yes, ma'am.
Council, can I get a thumbs up? Is that something that you all would support? All right, great. All right, thank you, thank you so much, and thank you for your patience in waiting for us to get to you.
Great, thank you so much.
Hey, Mayor, before we go to the next one, can I bring number eight up?
I believe the folks for the variants are, they're no longer with us, right? They're not coming?
No, they're not.
Okay, so we don't need to do a motion to change the agenda, because they're not, they're not coming?
Can, can, can I, but can I bring, can we bring number eight up, just so that I can notify the community on this matter?
That's fine, with the, if we're gonna move it, then I think we need a motion to, to change the...
Motion to amend the agenda to move item number eight, the 5,600 Newton Street variants, up.
going to take less than 60 seconds to address, and then we're gonna go back to number six.
Mayor and Council, it's not gonna take me long. Just wanted to let you all know that, um, the owner of 5600 Newton Street has pulled their proposal to build the house. And in fact, they've indicated to me that they are trying to sell the property. Um, so Mayor and Council, just to let you all know, I have, um, I will be getting a, I will, will be getting the property surveyed, uh, so that we can determine what the value is for the property and then have that conversation later. Just wanted to let you all know in the event that people were here waiting for that discussion because I know that's been a hot ticket item. Um, and that, that's all that I have for that right now.
All right. Okay. So with that, um, the street, the 5600 Newton Street variance is technically null and void. Um, is there any comments from around the table or questions? All right. Red, you can still provide resident input. Please come up, state your name, Ward, and keep your comment or question to three minutes.
Thank you very much. Uh, good evening, everyone. I, again, okay. Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. I'm Jay Joyner and would like to address, um, two notes. Um, let's see. Okay. Uh, to assemble here, having heard all the devastating flood of, um, 2020, it is my sincere hope that Alicia, the builder, uh, in all concern are indeed concerned about the health and safety of anyone housed at the 56 Newton Street, um, lot. And should that happen again, um, to Alicia, the builder, uh, may I draw your attention to 5702 Newton Street, just in the next block? It is an existing construction, but as the builder can show your proudness and adapt it to the homeowner's specifications, um, plenty of rear yard for deck or extension at the back of the house, a driveway, something to consider. Thank you very much, and thank you, Council, for denying, um, the, uh, build on that lot. Thank you very much.
We didn't know.
So, well, um...
Your, your comment has been made part of the record. Mayor and Council did not vote on the variants.
Yeah.
We did talk with the builder, we've talked with the owner, and they've made the decision to pull their request.
Thank you for sharing that information. Pardon me, and thank you for the correction. Thank you for sharing that information.
All right. Anyone else?
It's always good to come to a work session and have a really happy item on the agenda. Leila Riazzi, Ward One. Um, passing around, it, all of Mayor and Council received recommendations from the Chevrolet Green Infrastructure Committee. Um, we, um, dove in deep to find out what was going on with the lot and wanted to make sure that each of you also had a short form of that. We're very pleased, pleased to hear that the builder has withdrawn, um, the desire to build because our conclusions supported that this lot is unbuildable. Um, we also listened to the residents in a special working meeting of the Green Infrastructure Committee and are very grateful for the information they brought forward. And what we heard in that meeting was that building on this lot would continue to impact them and worsen the impact of any subsequent flooding. Um, and that the trauma of the 2020 September 10 flood still remains with these families. So anything that can be done, um, both to purchase the property and then also to work with the community, similarly to how, um, Councilmember Wade has worked with the Community Native Planting Group, to, um, make this a green space or other useful space for the community that does not, um, put, um, hardscape on the surface would be, um, as we understand, very welcome, um, from the neighbors and Green, the Green Infrastructure Committee, I would say, would support. Thank you very much. Happy to hear it.
Thank you. Councilmember Briner?
Um, yeah, in the spirit of, um, being open to input and everything, I would ask my fellow council member that if you're planning a meeting that is being billed as a community forum, or I'm pleased to hear that you let council know, because I didn't realize that that was the intent of this meeting until well after the meeting happened. Um, so if you could just give us a heads up so we can attend if, if that's the intention. Um, just because I work full-time, so I didn't have a chance to review any materials that were sent within the workday today. So I just want to make sure that I have all the information going into a meeting.
Yeah. Response?
Councilmember Wayne?
Thank you, uh, thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Councilmember Briner, for your input. Uh, I'll look that as a Ward One event, uh, for just the, uh, individuals around that area. So it was a last-minute thing. As you know, I just got back in country, so it was literally a last-minute, um, decision to be made. But just like with anything that's done in the ward, all the council members have various events that is not always publicized, so it was definitely a last-minute aspect. So I'll definitely take that into consideration going forward.
All right. Anyone else? Okay. Well, with that, um, Speed Humps on Crest Avenue. Um, Councilmember Watson, do you want to take that?
Sure, thank you. Um, yeah, so we had a meeting, I don't know, five months ago, six months ago, uh, before the winter, uh, the engineer and I think Mr. Bremen and Mr. Galloway, uh, attended. Um, and from that came the recommendations from the engineer. Uh, they were for, I think, two speed humps in one location and one speed hump in another location. Please correct me if I'm wrong. Um, and then I think there is some resident input, um, to recommend a change to the engineer's proposal of the location for one of the speed humps. But everyone is in favor of speed humps in this block. This is the 2800 block of Crest, so, uh, between Forest Road and Greenleaf Road. Um, and so I think tonight, uh, I would ask the council to approve them, um, following, hopefully a conversation that clarifies the location of them. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Watson. Mr. Councilmember Watson or Mr. Bremen, do we know if the, um, the resident input we received after our last meeting, did that go to Mr. Good, um, to see if that needs to move or if it's fine where, where he's already made the recommendation? Do we know if that went there already?
I am unsure that he received that. Um, but, and, and I believe the recommendation he sent in was for two speed humps. Uh, one to be located at, and I, and the, and the report is in your packet, 2806 Crest Avenue, and the other one at 2811, 2818, uh, Crest Avenue. Um, but what I was going to, uh, indicate though was I believe we can, um, work with, uh, the feedback in the motion and, uh, look at relocating, uh, these speed humps accordingly.
Okay. Don't quote me, but I believe the email that came in was to consider 2808.
He has two addresses though, at the 2811 and 2818, so I, I, I may be reading his report incorrectly here.
Okay. I'm not sure if you caught that. I will make sure that we forward the email just to be on the safe side. I believe that the, uh, the second number was, instead of 2806, it was 2808, but I may have made that up. So we just want to make sure, um, wherever it is, it's the best location.
Okay. And we can work with, um, folks out there if necessary when we're doing this.
All right. Um, I, I don't see any issues with approving this. It still needs to probably have discussion, um, and so I don't know if that would go on the consent agenda, but is everybody kind of in favor and supportive of the recommendations?
Can you vote on it tonight? I thought my, my understanding was after that meeting, you all were gonna vote on it this evening.
Well, I need a motion.
Well, I, I, I'll kick it to Councilmember Watson.
Uh, I'm happy to make a motion. I'd like to, I may have to modify my motion after we hear the resident input, but I'll make a motion anyway to, to get the discussion going, uh, for, uh, to authorize Mr. Galloway and, and his team to install two speed humps in the 2800 block of Crest Avenue. Uh, I believe it is one speed hump at 2811 slash 2818 and one speed hump at 2806.
Can I ask you to leave your motion as just two in the 2800 block, and in that way we don't have to change it? Because we know it's all in the 2800 block.
So moved.
All right. It's been motioned, is there a second? All right. Any discussion? All right. Resident input?
Good evening. Um, my name is Rita Kane. I live on, uh, Crest Avenue, um, Ward Two, 2803 Crest Avenue. The only reason, first of all, thank you very much. I'm very appreciative of the fact that we will have, uh, hopefully two speed bump. Um, the problem that I have, um, what, what I would like to recommend is to change location number one. Location number one is actually very close to a stop sign. Um, our houses and our street numbers are in such a, in such a way that, for example, I live, I'm on 2803 and, uh, you are...
2812.
2812, and she's right across my house. So 2806 is actually very, very close to where we were actually talking, that area. So move, having that bump or that hump right beside a stop sign might not be as effective as, you know, we would want it to be. Uh, as far as the other location, it, uh, does make sense, but it's just the first location, the location number one that I would like to know if we could kind of reconsider or look. Uh, I would be willing to recommend that it be maybe positioned around 28, which is my house, between 280, um, 03 and 2801. On the, um, odd number, and it would mean on the even number, I think it would coincide to 2808. You see, it just doesn't, uh, just push it just a little bit down. I think it would be much more effective than having it too close to the stop sign. And that's it.
Thank you. I think that's something that we can, uh, evaluate out in the field, so I'll ask Director Bremen that... I'm sorry. That's something that we can evaluate out in the field. I'll ask Director Bremen.
Yeah.
And our traffic engineer, uh, Good, to go out and reassess that one.
Mm-hmm.
And then we can kind of go from there.
Yeah.
So we do know it will be in that block.
Yes.
Or in that proximity. Um, thank you for bringing that to our attention, and we'll make a field call from there.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Resident input?
Joyce Jones, Ward Two. Super quick, just thank you for, uh, considering this. Thank you for my neighbor, and I have to say merci, because she speaks French and is French. Uh, anyway, um, yeah, I live at 2812, and, uh, it, it's, we know about the speeding in town, and people just come flying down that block. And so, you know, we want our kids to be safe, we want our dog walkers to be safe, our people pushing strollers, we want everybody to be safe. So thanks so much.
Thank you. Since sitting here waiting, might as well talk. I, I live on Forest and, and, uh, we've been beneficiaries of the pumps, the bump that was put in on our block, and I'm here to support the Crest people, uh, and their, um, and their, uh, suggestion to, to adjust. I think that makes sense. And so I'm here to support my neighbors because they supported us. But while we're at it, when we had the meeting where all the folks came up to the corner, I called to your attention that there is no handicap cutout at that block, um, in that intersection. And since I use a scooter now and then, I, you know, kind of noticed that, you know, when I was, when I had a dog and I'd walk, I'd have to go to a driveway and then come back. So while you're doing whatever you're doing, if you want to look at possibly putting a cutout at that intersection so that you can cross from Forest across Crest with a cutout, uh, as you have, it's, it's an interesting that it's, there's none at that intersection and there is at most of the others in town, so...
Certainly.
While I've got it, okay?
Thank you.
I'm Barbara Solz, Forest Road, Ward Two, for those of you who don't know.
Thank you. Oh, my. It's your coat. Yep, you're fine. You're okay. It's okay.
I'm sorry.
Thank you for coming to support your neighbors. All right. Um, it looks like that's everyone in person. Anyone online? I don't see hands. Great. All right. So it's been motioned, seconded, we've had discussion.
Can I, can I jump in this one real quick?
Mr. Galloway?
Councilmember Watson, can I ask you to modify your motion, please, to include the cutouts?
Absolutely. I'd love to do that. So I'd like to motion to empower Mr. Galloway, uh, and Mr. Bremen to install two speed humps at, in the 2800 block of Crest Avenue and to modify the curb, uh, at, at the intersection of Forest and Crest to include appropriate cuts for, uh, accessibility.
I second that as well.
Motion has been modified and seconded once again. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Congratulations, Crest. All right. Um, Keller Construction and Mr. Bremen?
Yes, hi. Good evening again. Um, we have Mr. Tremblay back, uh, to update us on the schedule.
Okay. Uh, can, can everyone hear me? Before I start, just make sure my microphone is working.
Yes, it is.
Yep, perfect. Thank you. Uh, good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, I provided an update, a broad update, uh, two weeks ago at the March 13th meeting on the status of the, uh, new Public Works, uh, facility. Uh, at that time, we'd requested a little bit, uh, more time to complete our schedule update as we just received our approval from, uh, SCD for our resequencing, uh, of our, um, permit. Uh, we have that, uh, we, we completed our schedule update on, in the past couple of weeks, um, for the remaining activities to complete construction. Um, the, with the schedule update, uh, reflects that we are tracking, uh, about 10 weeks, which is just a little bit over two months, uh, behind our original schedule. Uh, the project was to be complete, um, 12 months after we ceded the building permit. Uh, that building permit was issued in, in March of, of 2024. Um, our focus right now is on achieving use and occupancy, and so the, the focus is through the public utilities that are required, uh, to be able to, uh, complete the activities, the life safety activities that are, that are necessary to get use and occupancy. Uh, I do have a couple of, uh, key dates to share, um, on that schedule update. Um, one is we, uh, expect to have our, our demo or our raise permit for the existing Public Works building, uh, by Monday, the 31st, this coming Monday. Uh, so you should be seeing that existing building coming down, um, starting, uh, right after that, and, uh, we expect that it's only gonna take no more than a week to, uh, move that building and pull up slabs, the, the existing floor slabs. Um, May 19th is...
Yes, hi. Good evening again. We have Mr. Tremblay back to update us on the schedule.
Okay. Can everyone hear me before I start? Just make sure my microphone is working.
Yes, it is.
Perfect, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I provided an update, a broad update, two weeks ago at the March 13th meeting on the status of the new Public Works facility. At that time, we requested a little bit more time to complete our schedule update as we just received our approval from SCD for our resequencing of our permit. We have that. We completed our schedule update in the past couple of weeks for the remaining activities to complete construction. The, the schedule update reflects that we are tracking about 10 weeks, which is just a little bit over two months behind our original schedule. The project was to be complete 12 months after we ceded the building permit. That building permit was issued in March of 2024. Our focus right now is on achieving use and occupancy. And so the focus is through the public utilities that are required to be able to complete the activities, the life safety activities that are necessary to get use and occupancy. I do have a couple of key dates to share on that schedule update. One is we expect to have our demo or our raise permit for the existing Public Works building by Monday, the 31st, this coming Monday. So you should be seeing that existing building coming down starting right after that. And we expect that it's only going to take no more than a week to remove that building and pull up slabs, the existing four slabs. May 19th is the date we have on there to expect permanent power from Pepco. There's numerous steps involved in having that permanent power brought in to the site. There's a process there, but May 19th is when we expect that to begin. And then we're looking at a substantial completion date of June 6th. So when we say substantial completion, that is synonymous with our use and occupancy. So the question is, why are we late? And what is being done to recover or accelerate that? The same reason that I provided at the last meeting, we're, the biggest impact we've had right now is the resequencing of the site plan, the sediment control sequence of construction that was on our permit. We had a conflict with a stabilized construction entrance in the location of the transformer pad. It was a relatively simple modification to be able to just move that entrance away from the transformer pad to be able to allow that to happen. Obviously, we have to have the transformer in first before we can occupy the new building. They can't be in the same place at the same time. However, the process of getting that simple change done ended up taking a lot of, several months with the process with SCD. Again, we thought this was going to be able to be done at the inspector level. Worst case, maybe a red line revision, but ultimately had to go in for a full resubmission just to be able to make that happen. Concurrently, we were able to add some scope changes to the project to make some improvements with the mayor and council chambers and the NAV card readers and NAV adds to the job so that those were able to be added without any additional time because it's concurrent with the times on the delay of getting the project resequenced. And then back to what has been done to recover or accelerate that schedule. So the team, meaning the Public Works team, as well as our design and engineering team and Keller's team are collaborating with those public utilities. So we're using all of our resources at the highest levels as well as the town's governmental liaisons to work with Pepco, WSSC, Washington Gas and Comcast to be able to make sure that those life safety affected or driven utilities are going to be able to come in. There's on time. There are a lot of steps involved in there. It's not just a simple phone call. They have to come out and do some inspections, have meetings, make sure everything's in place before they actually send their crews out to activate their services to our site. We're also working to, once we have certain utilities in, we're looking at what we call stacking finished trades. And by stacking trades, what it means is we'll have multiple crews for the finishes to be able to complete the interior work more rapidly, to be able to get to that deadline and potentially even improve that deadline of that June 6th date and see if we can't pull that back even, and even improve that date from where we are right now. On, there was a question that was brought up about a January completion date. So I just wanted to be proactive and update where that came from. That January completion date came from one of Keller's previous project managers. He provided that date, I think in good faith, but without fully being able to substantiate that date and some of the activities that were needed to be able to achieve that date. So that was unfortunately not based on the correct information. And one of the things that he had put in there was the assumption that we were going to be able to get that resequencing permit changed by October, or at least have the existing building demolished by October of last year. And obviously, that didn't happen. It doesn't mean that we're, the January date, again, is not our contractual date, but we are, like I said, contractual date would be March. And then we're, like I said, we're tracking approximately two months past that currently and hoping to improve. And then the last update would be with our budget. And just to update everyone, we are still within the, say it's the original budget plus some additions that were added by the town during construction for the audio visual, some of the dais and casework for the interior, the solar array for the roof, to provide onsite electrical, and then some of the FFNE items and some of the equipment for the lifts and other equipment for the garage spaces or the vehicle maintenance base in the project. And we are still within that, within that budget. So that's my update and I can feel any questions you may have.
All right, thank you, Mr. Tremblay. Councilmember Brennan?
I may have missed this, but to be 100% clear, what is our estimate for the fences around going up the hill and around the front grassy area in Town Park? What is our estimate for those coming down?
I don't have an estimate for that. Project Executive Justin Short, who is, I'm not on the construction operations side. He was going to be here this evening, but he had a commitment with one of his children. So I don't have an exact date for that, but obviously, my understanding is that's happening soon. I mean, there's some public utilities work that went in, that fence from Forest Drive all the way down. But that work, as my understanding is already in. The connections have to be made down the hill. So I don't think that that fence is going to be up for much longer. I think that's the fence you're asking about, correct?
Yes.
Going up to Forest Drive down to the site?
Yes.
I apologize. I don't have an exact date, but I can certainly follow up with Justin and relay that to Mr. Bremen and he can share that.
Thank you.
If that's the right thing to do.
Okay. Mr. Tremblay, if I could just urge you and your team to work on making up the time. When you all share information with us, we share with our constituents. So we shared with the public that we would have a building ready for them in January because that's what we were told. And so the most important thing was for us to have this open by June 14th because that is the date of death for Mr. Ely, which is the name of the person who the building is named for. And so we don't want to see any further delays particularly past that date because that is critically important to our community. So if we can just work on making sure we get closer towards the now past March date when we're supposed to be completed, that would be great.
Yes, ma'am, understood. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you, thank you again for your time.
Have a good night.
We want to get you to that finish line and be able to have an open house and ribbon cutting and everything else that comes along with that. Thank you.
We appreciate it. All right. Board of Elections on? You say you do or you don't?
I do.
Okay. Do we have anyone from the Board of Elections? Okay, it says she's not on now. Mr. Galloway, do you want to move forward with your update? It looks like the representative from the Board of Elections is no longer with us.
Sure.
Can we have staff reach out to see if she's still hot back on?
We can.
All right, thank you.
Mayor and Council, I don't have an update this evening. I just have reminders. Budget meeting is scheduled for April the 3rd. That is the police department's, that is the police department's section of the budget. April 17th will be the Public Works section of the budget. And April the 26th is the spring clean event here in the town. So please let your residents know that they have trash to throw away, to discard that day, they can. We will also have a shredding vehicle here. So if you have papers that need to be shredded, please bring them and they'll do them in front of you. But outside of a formal update, Mayor and Council, I don't have anything to update you all on right now unless you all have any questions for me.
As Councilmember Wade?
Is there a limit on the number of boxes to shred? Because usually, there's a limit.
No, we've never ran into that issue.
Other things, other places, it's all like a two box limit. So there's no limit?
There's no limit.
Okay. I'll bring all 15.
We have a huge
Thank you very much.
industrial truck, so please bring them.
I usually bring a year's worth, it's tons. And it takes 30 seconds. It's a great little machine. Thank you, Mr. Galloway. I saw a hand, is there resident input? If you'll come forward, please. Okay, okay. So we're trying to make sure that that person comes forward. They were on before. We are running late, so I'm not sure if they had to go. But we may have to have them just come forward for our town session.
Are there any questions for me right now?
Looks like we're good. All right, Chief? I thought I saw DC instead of Chief. Oh, there you are.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Nothing in particular from the police department that's changed in the last two weeks, but the deputy chief and I are here to answer any questions that Mayor and Council may have or any community concerns.
Chief, there has been a significant change. Everyone has sweatshirts except for Mayor and Council. So we would like to be considered at the next sweatshirt purchase.
We can handle that. That's an easy one. Give me something more difficult.
All right, anyone else? Nope, all right, thanks, Chief.
I'm sorry?
It looks like there's no input or comment from Mayor and Council, resident input.
Joyce Jones, Ward 2. First of all, just wanted to say thrilled also to be able to say Chief and not interim chief. Great working with you. And I have inquired a couple of times about being on the Police Chief Advisory Board, and I've been told it's coming, it's coming, or they're not sure who's in charge of it. So just want to put my hat in that again and looking forward to being able to be part of it whenever it's active or reconstituted. Thank you so much.
Absolutely. We look forward to having your participation.
All right. I think that's all for you, Chief. So with that, updates, Councilmember Garces?
All right. Hi, everybody. How's it going? First thing, I think I just want to go ahead and just thank Mr. Galloway and his crew for the pop-up food distribution. I know residents enjoyed it, they loved it, and we're very grateful for you all for that. Mayor, thank you for also being out there distributing the food home to my residents. For Nubeywise, Councilmember Frye and myself, we started doing war walks again with the property manager and regional property manager. This last ward walk, we had, well, more like ward stay, but you know, we had a nice turnout. We had about 12 residents, 13 residents that came out with concerns. And that's what we tried to encourage our residents to come out of Ward 5 and discuss the issues and concerns that they have with the property managers. It went well. You know, we spoke a lot, especially about security, you know, police activity as well. We spoke about, you know, just slimming conditions at Ward 5. And I'm, you know, I'm pretty satisfied of how that conversation went. Again, I just want to thank Councilmember Frye and Mayor and Chief and Deputy Chief for hanging in there. I know it was kind of cold. I got there a little late, but you know, DC traffic is DC traffic. Can't ever beat that. But I just want to thank you guys for showing support. I appreciate you guys for everything you guys have been doing and have done for my ward as well. And also thanks to Councilmember Brennan for also showing support and just going out there sometimes and just, you know, walking with us. And I invite all council members to just take your time and just walk with us. I know Councilmember Wade had mentioned that, you know, a lot of, we have, there's a lot of events here and there in different wards, but I think I have personally invited everyone to come out and walk my ward. So it's like the invitation is there whenever you guys want. Just let me know ahead of time. You know, we'll make the time and definitely walk, right? Because at the end of the day, it's not only one ward for each, but it's all of Chevrolet. And I think it's only fair, right? But it is what it is. And but it's pretty much it. Oh, I think we also have an event coming up, right? With Chief, April 4th. What is it, what's it called? Pizza with the popo?
Pizza with the popo.
Pizza with the popo, which residents are definitely excited about. And so if you guys have a chance, just come out there and just support and just be residents at my ward.
Okay. I did think that she was joking, but that's actually happened. Okay. Well, Councilmember Garces, I want to thank you and Councilmember Frye for advocating for this community. It was really nice to meet with people who were highlighting that they have lived in Chevrolet Station Apartments for 20 years. Those are long-term residents. And sometimes we have very misplaced misperceptions about folks that live in Chevrolet Station Apartments. They're very much dedicated to their communities and some of those are really long-term residents that want to make sure that they live in a safe place. So it was great to see them come out. With that, we have our April town meeting agenda. Any requests for that? We already know that we have our votes for our consent agenda. And we have to have an update for Crest just to know where that number is going to be.
Arbor Day proclamation.
Okay. Anything else? Councilmember Garces? Our next town session?
Well, I think just in general, I think I just want to know, wow. I think I've, well, I personally haven't received, I guess, a notification or communication in regards to why there wasn't a ballot box placed at the Chevrolet Station Apartments, right? I feel like at least my residents are all that, and myself, right? And then Councilmember Frye. I feel like it just died. It just died. Like there was no communication from Board of Elections. It just never was pursued. So I want at least some type of communication or an explanation of why it was not done. If that's okay, Mr. Galloway.
I'll notify them. I will notify them to make them aware. We have been trying to get in touch with the member of the Board of Elections and fortunately, we have not been successful in contacting them.
Okay. Our town session is two weeks from now. I would like to hear from Council if you're interested in trying to have a special meeting with Board of Elections. They just made the decision not to have the ballot box. Of course, there was much opposition to it from several people. So it may have been in response to that, but obviously, elections are sooner rather than later. So you all have to tell me if your schedules permit that or not and if that's something you'd like to see. Councilmember Wade?
Am I for a special meeting regarding?
Well, I saw your hand raised, but yes, if you want to speak to that, a special meeting before we get to town session.
Definitely for that. I have no problem with that. I was about to mention about something for the next meeting.
Okay.
WSSC, Ward 1, property. About that, the property?
Water tower?
Yeah.
Tremont?
Sure.
Anyone else for agenda items? All right. Well, with no future requests or additional agenda items, I will entertain a motion. Councilmember Garces?
Yeah, I just want to, some more of a shout out to town staff again and, you know, which includes our Public Works as well as our police. You know, they're constantly going around. I mean, especially our police department, they're just out there. They're doing their thing. I don't know about child, but I've been feeling extra safe lately, you know, with the whole 24/7 thing, you know? Thanks to Chief and thanks to DC for that, as well as Mr. Galloway. Thank you for all your hard work. So I want to thank Gisele, Yvonne, Aja, Ms. Tanya, definitely for the hard work that they put out there and definitely reflects of all the outstanding staff that you have. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else here at the table? All right, I see resident input. Would you like to come forward?
Killing too many trees today. I'm passing this around just so that people can see what I'm referencing. I'm really appreciative that I had the opportunity to bring an issue forward to, that they understand the Board of Elections supervisors is in contact with the town attorney to understand. I reached out because at the last Board of Elections I reached out because at the last Board of Elections meeting, I thought that I had heard that if 16-year-olds were registering to vote, and if they lacked any piece of mail or something verifying their address, that they would have to have an affidavit that they would sign, and their parents or guardians would also sign. I found that distressing because it actually works against the idea of allowing for 16-year-olds and 17-year-olds to freely vote. It creates a barrier, and I brought it forward, and I just wanted you to hear from me because I don't know how that subsequent conversation will go, and I assume it will come back to you at some point. But when we assume that every 16- and 17-year-old relationship is such that their parents will both have the time, the wherewithal, and the interest, or not be in opposition to them freely acting on the opportunity to vote at the age of 16 or 17, we are actually, quite honestly, acting from a point of privilege. And the situation can often be that a 16- or 17-year-old does not have the support of his or her parents or guardians in that regard, and it's another aspect that often works as a control factor in unhealthy relationships there. The added aspect of that is, just in the spirit of supporting Vote 16 and Vote 17, when you say, oh, you get a right to vote if, you know, someone else steps forward and signs for you, it really is against the spirit of what we're trying to accomplish. I brought forward, back when we were looking at the right to vote for 16-year-olds, I did a lot of research in other municipalities, and recalled and came back to the city of Hyattsville, the affidavit that they have applies to anyone who can't provide the documentation necessary, and they spell out that includes someone who's 16, and that individual has the opportunity to sign that they are attesting, that they live at that address, and that they meet the qualifications. So when that comes before you, which I anticipate it will, I wanted you to hear from me, it doesn't matter how many people, and it doesn't matter that, and I understand that our Board of Elections supervisors would do anything that they can individually if somebody comes up to them, but generally, a 16- or 17-year-old isn't going to come up to you to say, this doesn't work for me, instead to not have the barriers be there. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you for that. We have more resident input.
Sheila Sello, Ward 2, I just wanted to ask whether it is true that candidates don't have access to the voter list, the official voter list?
I don't know if other candidates, I'm a candidate, I don't have access to a voter list.
Mr. Galloway has something to say?
If you're referring to the voter list that's provided by the Board of Election, the Board of Election...
County Board of Elections?
The county, no, no, the Town Board of Elections.
Town Board of Elections.
Which voter list are you referring to?
Any voter list, the candidates would need the voter list for their wards, or if the cases for the mayor, they would need the voter list for the entire town, right?
You can get a voter list from a third-party resource, like MD Chris or something like that, but the town does not provide that list.
So you can buy it from the county, but that's only voters that are registered with the county and the state. The town has not released and is not, has not decided whether in its benevolence it will release the town voter list, which is, I'm guessing, 70 or 80 folks who are registered only with the town. For whatever reason, they're military, they're non-citizens, they're 16 or 17 years old. That list has not been made available by the Board of Elections.
So the candidates would need, would need those lists in order to campaign, am I right?
No, I know, I don't, I don't know if that's something the Board of Elections has decided, something particularly for non-citizens, it would be inappropriate to release the list.
Then it was a question for the Board of Elections, so I sat in the right place.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes. So again, Mr. Galloway, if I can ask that you reach out to Board of Elections to see if we can try to get a special meeting, that would be great, because folks have lots of questions.
Sure.
And rightfully so. All right, is there a motion? Councilmember Garces?
I just want to add to my shout out, shout out to Natalie as well.
All right, thank you. You know, I appreciate the advocacy for folks being able to vote, it'd be great if we had that same advocacy for folks that have been disenfranchised at Chevrolet Station Apartments. So I would love, as you come up with questions and ideas for the Board of Elections, that you, if you, if you have creative ideas for how we can make sure other people who have historically been left out of the ability to easily have access and have additional barriers to voting, if you've got suggestions on how to improve that, that you consider that when we have the meeting with Board of Elections as well. Councilmember Bryner?
Motion to adjourn.
All right, it's been a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, have a good night.